Like to call the Village of North Fond du Lac Village Board Meeting to order Monday, May 17th. Due to state of emergency related to COVID-19, the Village will have limited seating at the Village Board Meeting. In addition to the board meeting being available on cable channel 980, you're also able to dial in and speak, listeners speak through the phone. If you'd like to call in, please dial 920-322-6120 between 5:45 and 5:55 on the day of the meeting. Audience members are requested to sign in in the sheet provided at the registration table. Citizens wishing to be heard on topics not listed on the agenda may speak under item C. Citizens may be given an opportunity to speak during discussion of items listed on the agenda and are allowed three minutes for comments. Disruptive discussion or profanity will not be allowed. Roll call of officers.
Duffy.
Here.
Horning.
Here.
Streeter.
Here.
Price.
Here.
Will.
Here.
Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Any announcements? All right, see none. President's business, library, Heather.
Thank you. Just continuing to work on our summer reading program materials, so we've got our children's pretty much ready to go. So the children will be encouraged to stop down at the library and pick up a packet that has tickets and it also has information about all the activities we have going on at the library and a little incentive here just to get started. And so we've just been working on that a lot, hopefully getting the word out in numerous ways. I'll be keeping tax forms for another couple of weeks. I know today was the tax deadline. We always have a few that come in after, so I'm going to keep those on hand for a few weeks. And then we're going to be meeting for our book club on Monday, June 28th at 6 o'clock, and we're reading Driving Miss Norma for that meeting. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Heather. Anything for the call. Administrator Nick.
Thank you. We've started to receive some more clarity and information about the stimulus money that the Village will be receiving. Still not real clear, but they're finally starting to get some information on rules and what we can spend it on, what we can't spend it on. Still pretty vague rules, but there's a lot of other communities obviously dealing with the same thing, so that's coming along. We're starting to, I think I got another email today actually about it. We received our final financial audits last week from Baker Tilly, who they're here tonight to represent that, so we'll talk about that later. I did post the Director of Public Works position internally last week. That's their letters of interest and resumes are due Thursday of this week. And also, I don't know if anybody saw, but again, the street is closed in that area, but the pool did get the new graphics, vinyl sign put on the exterior. There's actually one on the front, there's one on the back that you wouldn't be able to see unless you're inside the pool, or you can kind of see it from the backside by Cleveland Street. But that looks nice and adds a little bit of color to it, so. Other than, I guess I'll wait for Public Works for later.
Okay. Police Department, Derek.
Thank you. So this past week I made a final offer of employment to Jake Egan for the sergeant's position. You'll recall that position was left vacant when I promoted Clarissa Justman to lieutenant. So we did an internal process, made the offer to Jake, and he accepted subject to PFC approval. He will be starting his new duties this Saturday, May 22nd. So then obviously that creates another vacancy in patrol for us. We have a process that is ongoing. We, I did a chief's interview with one of the candidates last Friday, and we started doing a background on that candidate today, so we'll see where that takes us. Hopefully, we can keep moving forward here. Excuse me. This past week was National Police Week, so I want to thank the Schmidtky family, the Egan family, and Shielded Hearts of Fox Valley. They all, throughout the week, dropped off a ton of treats for us. There was a cake, all kinds of potato chips and granola bars and Gatorade, so the troops obviously appreciate that, and we greatly appreciate the support of the community. Hands down, the people in and around North Fond du Lac are what makes this job worth doing, so we're grateful to them. Also, last week, the City of Fond du Lac hosted its annual memorial service that they do every year for Police Week. It is specifically geared to recognize the three Fond du Lac officers that have died: Nick Klaske, William Prinslow, and Officer Craig Burkholz. This year marked 10 years since he made the ultimate sacrifice. And then also Wisconsin State Patrol Trooper Trevor Casper, who was killed in the City of Fond du Lac. And of course, we also recognize all the fallen officers around the country, but they did a joint honor guard, multi-agency honor guard, which is something we've been doing for a lot of years, and we were asked to be a part of that. So Lieutenant Justman, Officer Egan, and Officer Joel Jaeger participated and represented our department at that, so I appreciate them being willing to do that. It was a great ceremony. We, I posted some pictures on Facebook. If you haven't seen them, take a look, because they did us proud. And lastly, I want to take the opportunity on behalf of North Fond du Lac Police Department and the Village of North Fond du Lac as a whole to congratulate Bill Lamb, who is officially retiring this week after 33 years in law enforcement. You'll recall that Bill worked for us from 1991 to 2011, 10, the last 10 of those years was as a chief before he went to the City of Fond du Lac as a chief. So this week brings close to an extraordinary career, and anybody who's been with the Village for any length of time knows that the Police Department and the Village as a whole, we certainly owe Bill a lot. His professionalism, his integrity, his vision went a long way in shaping who we are. You know, he did two terms as interim village administrator while he was here as well, so it goes far beyond the Police Department, and I want to wish him and Terry all the best in this next chapter in their lives. That's all.
Thank you, Derek. Fire EMS, Jake.
Thank you. I handed out the incident log from April, so you guys can take a look at that. Let me know if you have any questions. 502 was out of service for about a week and a half down at Renner's getting fixed. We had issues with the brake system, so they were able to repair that. We got the ambulance back, and then on its way back, actually, there was a malfunction, so they took it back and we got it back today. So it's back in service now, and hopefully, knock on wood, nothing pops up here in the near future again. The next three days, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, I'll be down at the county building for meetings pertaining to the new CAT system. They run 8 to 4:30, so it's a lot of the background work of what the CAT system will look like moving forward, once it gets implemented in November. So it's pretty exciting that the system is capable of a lot more than what the current one is, and will be able to utilize a lot more features that we haven't in the past. And other than that, Peter Fetters and I have been out doing quite a few inspections on either new business or people that are remodeling businesses, existing businesses in the Village, so that's where some of my time has been spent as well. That's all I have.
Thanks, Jake.
Yep.
Public Works, Nick.
Oh yeah, just a couple of updates. Beshawd Avenue Northeast Asphalt finished up the grading last week of the street, so the gravel is all ready to go. Their plans are to be here tomorrow actually to start paving that, and I would assume a job like that is probably going to be two, two and a half, maybe three days of paving, so by the end of this week it should be pretty much complete. The grass is already growing, the landscapers are done, so record time on this one. Usually we shoot for the 4th of July to have these projects completed the following spring, and here we are, it's going to be probably May 20th, it'll be complete, so. It's better for everything, the people on the street along with the grass grows better this time of the year, so it's, that one went very well this spring. Again, even though it has been dry, there's been a lot of time spent on drainage, you know, I sound like a broken record every year about this time, but even though, you know, we haven't had a lot of rain this year, but there's still drainage issues we're dealing with. The crew has been working on cleaning up and painting the village pool, scheduled to open, I think that's June 4th, and also they're doing some spring cleaning down at the village garage area from over the winter, all the water main breaks, and they tend to pile that stuff up down there because they got nowhere to go with it in the middle of winter, so. Just working on some spring cleaning in that regard, so that's all I have.
All right. Thanks, Nick. Consent agenda. Approve the minutes of the following Village Board Meeting from May 3rd, and approve invoices and authorized checks be drawn on the respective funds as indicated. General Fund $162,459.35. Library Fund $1,126.02. EMS Fund $2,960.1. Capital Projects $225,284.39. Water Department $6,991.83. Waste Water Department $2,407.24. Storm Water Fund $2,459.20. Community Development Authority TIF $1,650.21 for a grand total of $405,338.25. And also approve the following operators license: Penny Schneider for Dollar General, Megan Putty for Village Park Permanent, Daniel Baldoff for Village Park, and Anthony Putty, Village Park, and Madeline Levitt for Village Park. What is the board's...
I made a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
I got a second?
I'll second that motion.
And a motion by Will, second by Price, to approve the consent agenda as read. Are there any questions or comments on this? Nick, just a quick question for the pool shirts. Do we, do we try to go localized, say that we bought them out of like Beaver Creek or something, or we just, like...
Try and find...
Like, do we try to support local business or not really?
Um, I think that the challenge there is the budget.
Okay, just going with the cheapest?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. And then with the stump removals, how are we looking on the, for the removal of the ash trees?
The ash trees, we're pretty much done removing them, yeah.
Cool.
Yeah, there might be a few hanging out there here and there, but otherwise we're pretty much done.
Okay. Awesome.
We just have one quick question.
Yeah, Mike.
Page six, that JE Arthur and Associates, project administration, what is, what project is that?
That's OSG, so they work for the OSG.
OSG, okay.
Yep, so that cost is covered by us right now, but in the end, we won't pay for all that because we end up billing all the other OSG districts.
Yep.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
Any other questions on this one? All right, see none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. We move on to administrative discussion and possible action on the 2020 financial audit.
I'll turn this over to John and Cameron, they're both here to present, which is nice because last year I think we did it via telephone, and that always creates a little rough, so. But John and Cameron are both here to present that, and I'll turn that over to them because they know it better than all of us. Yeah, if you want to just sit down with a microphone, that's perfectly fine.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Hello, everyone. Thanks for having us. It's great to be here. I said to Chuck and Nick before we came in, I think it's been 14 months since I've been to a client, so it's long overdue. It's great to be here. It was actually nice to get in my car and drive a little bit too, so. Cameron, I'm going to share this, as mentioned. My name's John Rader, I'm familiar to most of you, I think, and Cameron Sawyers helps manage the job and has been involved with the Village's audit for a number of years, so I'm going to kind of go through some high level stuff, and then he's going to hit on some of the numbers for all the funds except the utility funds, and I'll circle back to the utility funds. But do let us know if you have questions as we go through this. That's, you know, one of the reasons that we're here. So I'm going to walk through a document that looks like this, it's called Reporting and Insights. I think you have, it looks like you have paper copies, good, so they got here. And then you probably have a PDF too, maybe, perhaps.
I didn't send no PDFs.
Okay, okay. So I'll walk through this. The numbers are in the back of here too, but before I do, I just want to mention where we're at. We did prelim remotely back in December for a day, kind of worked through the controls assessment and things like that, and then we actually did the audit, I think Utility was here right at the end of February, or again remotely, and we were here the first week in March. So we did all our audits, our whole firm did, throughout the world like this, and that would have been pretty tough 10, 15 years ago, but with the ability to, you know, digital imaging and sharing screens to watch, you know, walking through things, we had a lot of success with it, but we're certainly looking forward to getting back onsite.
John, do you think that's the norm now?
I don't think it's the norm. I think some, you know, some clients want us there every day, some want a mix. I would say most want a mix, probably 50/50. So if we're onsite for a week normally, they might say, first couple of days, let's do it remotely. And I think the key to it all is just being well-prepared, and the Village is always well-prepared, and so we can do a lot without even bothering anybody for a day or two, but then it's good to be onsite. It also reduces the burden on village staff too, especially for certain items, you don't have to be scanned. A lot, you already do a lot of imaging, but I think it's still good to be onsite for a variety of reasons, yeah.
Thank you.
So it's probably going to go towards a mix or a hybrid. So we prepare drafts of your financial statements in this report, and we send it off to Nick and Chris here at the Village to take a look at, and once they're okay with everything, we issue a final, and we just did that last week, within a day of what we did last year, so pretty much timely as we've been in the past. So, all right, I'm going to hit on a couple of pages in here, just to mention a few things. Page five says responsibilities at the top. I won't walk you through all this, but these are bullet point items that talks about what are our responsibilities as an auditor, because there's quite often a misperception about what is an audit. And there's lots of different kinds of audits, but what we're really doing is a financial audit, so that we can do what this last bullet point says here, is we're issuing opinion on your financial statements to let readers, banks, granting agencies, others, know if they're prepared according to the rules, generally accept that accounting principles are GAAP. And we've done that, and we've issued what we call a clean opinion or unmodified, which means they are prepared according to GAAP. That's what you want, the highest level of assurance you can get from an external CPA firm. Page 10, at the very top here, you see a little grid. These are really very high-level areas that we focus on during the audit, so Cameron may work on revenues, I may work on debt, and we've got a couple of other people work on other things, we kind of shift as we go through the week. So these are focus areas, again, on a very high level, pension liabilities and areas such as that.
Just a question. Go back to page nine.
Okay.
I kind of looked at last year's audit and compared it to this year's.
Yes.
And there's a new one under this key area, is a proper revenue recognition due to fraud.
Right.
Is that just another...
You have a good eye. And so, I would say in our reports, we weren't consistent whether that one in or not. This is a more of an industry issue, this says, no matter where you go, there's a fraud risk because of revenue recognition, but it doesn't really apply in governments, but the standards say you have to still consider it. So we made a firm-wide decision, let's just put it all in there. But it's not, it's not like a SEC company trying to misstate the receivables because they're trying to inflate earnings for shareholders and such. It just doesn't apply. Unfortunately, it didn't make an exclusion for governments. Great question. Back to page 10, starts talking about internal control matters, and these are things that used to kind of be the main body of our old report under the old format, but we're still reporting it, and we don't have any new points for the Village this year. These are ones that you've seen in the past. The first one under here is segregation of duties, just purely because of your size, you don't have staff to do all the different things separately, so there's going to be some issues for that.
Did we not add or recreate a position to help address this issue, and was that taken into consideration?
Yep.
Or how did that cover the plate? Because it's still here.
And I was going to touch on that on the next page a little bit, yeah.
Yeah.
When we get into the more specific ones.
Yeah, and this is just a high-level comment, and to your question, it's a great question or comment is, we, I think we even say it in here, we're not saying that the Village should go out and hire additional people or anything like that. Village has actually done a great job in my years of working with you of separating things as much as possible, and where you can't separate, you've done a nice job of creating what we call a compensating control, so at least there's somebody else looking at something. Better than I would say some of my larger clients, so they've done a really nice job. The bottom comment on page 10 is the financial statement close process. That's just because we prepare, like I said, your financial statements. If, even if you prepared your own, if we had material entries and we had a handful, not many, there's always fewer than 10, and they're consistent from year to year, we would still have this comment. And just like I've said to you in the past, this is probably 90-some percent of our reports. Very few governments, especially in Wisconsin, have the resources to prepare their own statements. Page 11 gets kind of back to segregation of duties. We look at a little bit more in-depth, a lot more in-depth of certain areas such as how do you process payroll, how do you pay invoices, journal entries, utility billing, these different things. And these first three items here, payroll, utility billing, and financial reporting, again, get to a little bit more specific segregation within those areas. Did you want to say something?
Yeah, so I was just going to, John, I had these highlighted, those four items listed under there. Controls over payroll, we are cross-training there. I don't know that we can ever really get rid of that one just because of our size, but we are working on getting closer to meeting what they would prefer. The controls over utility billing, that one, we're really there. We, the only, we have one person that does our utility billing, and on a very rare occasion does she actually take the money at the front desk, so we're really close on that one, and that's because of the rearrangement. And then the next one, the control of financial reporting, I don't know how we're going to get away from that one. And then the information technology, that one's a little bit of a question mark as to, we've reached, I've reached out to RMM several times about this one, about testing the backup, and they can't really give us a straight answer. We've worked on that a little bit this, within the last couple of months. So that one too. I'm hoping two of these four may be gone next year.
Yeah.
But it is really difficult with our size, that you've got three people really doing all the work, when two people are on vacation, that person has to do some of that stuff, and you kind of lose that segregation.
When that happens, because vacations do happen, is that taken in consideration when you do your audit, where for the majority of the year, they are being separated, but there are times, as Nick just explained, that this person may have to take, is that a consideration or not?
It's a consideration. I mean, we would look at how do you deal with those kind of times of lapsing? You know, that's, you know, somebody could subsequently come in and review it later on, because that would be fine, because we know that not everybody can be in their seat all the time. Yeah, absolutely.
But then, as John mentioned earlier, we have a different checklist, so to speak, of checking, you know, there's, we make sure there's segregation, even though we can't do this, we make sure that somebody else is checking it over that's not involved, and that's usually me, so.
Yeah. Okay. Any more questions on those items? And then the top of page 12, sewer rate review. I think this has been in for a little while because of, yeah, the clean water fund loans outstanding. The state of Wisconsin, this administrative code that's mentioned here requests that a rate study be done every other year, and the last one that was done was in 2015, so that I think actually ended up increasing your rates just by an inflationary factor in 2016, so.
What's the monthly cost?
We can just do it internally, can't you? Is that what you've done in the past?
We can, we have it in the past, but I think six to 8,000, the last time we checked in.
Yeah.
That's a $1.5 million annual budget, so it's a pretty large undertaking, yeah.
Are there any penalties for not doing the rate study?
No.
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 And as we get into the, if we, when we look at the sewer wastewater graph, when we start looking at that graph, you're going to see, I mean, it's just, it's so consistent that, you know, it's hard to spend the money, so.
Yeah, understandable. And I do want to, I don't know if it's worth noting or not, the placement of that comment is in the back, so it's not like a, the significance is less, is one way to put it. Required communications on page 13, so there's a few pages here. You'll see this in all audit reports of all governments and companies, just different things. I'll just mention a couple of things. That very first item, in the middle of, underneath qualitative aspect of accounting practices, top page 13, that the Village didn't have to implement or adopt any new accounting rules this year. This is kind of significant, because when you do it, it can be a fair amount of effort in some years, depending on what you have to do. But GASB, Government Accounting Standing Board, gave all governments a break this year because of COVID, which was the first time that they've ever done that. Accounting estimates, there are a few estimates for the Village, these are kind of common ones, depreciation, pension liabilities, and allowance for doubtful accounts because of your EMS revenues or receivables. There are underlying assumptions that are made for each of those that we take a look at as part of the audit each year. No issues there. On the next couple of pages, like I say, there's disagreements, any of this kind of stuff, there are no problems of this nature. And then if you turn to page 18, speaking of new accounting rules, these are all the ones that are around the bend. Just one for next year, 2021, that's 89. The Village hasn't really done this in the past much either, anyways, I should say, so it's not going to be a big change. This would be in the utility funds where you capitalize interest, this accounting rule says you need to stop doing that. But 87 is the one that's two years out, and that's regarding leases. This is on the FASB for companies as well, it's going to be a big change, and this is going to be a heavy lift for a lot of places. So depending on the extent of leasing that the Village does and such, there's going to be some different items in your footnotes and also on your balance sheet that we'll be working with the Village proactively to make sure you're ready for it. Page 21, these are just a few different pages of informational points. The PDF actually has hyperlinks in here if you're interested in this kind of stuff, but it's, you know, talks about the different federal wards and all kinds of things that may or may not be of interest to you. Economic development. Most of this comes from different parts of our firm, consultants and others. And page 35 is the last thing I'll mention, I'll turn it over to Cam. This is just a high-level summary of the different adjustments that we had. I think, I didn't go back and count, but I think I recall there are 10 or fewer entries for the audit, and I always consider that really commendable when you consider how many transactions flow through here. And these are things that, you know, the Village has typically left is just, we just know we're going to work through it during the audit, because you have to wait for some final numbers. It's not payables and things like that that are just part of every day.
Just a question. Does it report pilot general fund? Just press what pilot is?
Payment in lieu of taxes.
Yeah.
So the utilities pay to the general fund for payment in lieu of taxes.
Yeah, it's a regulated amount. Okay.
Just go to that one that John mentioned, increase of balance for general fund to, you know, I noticed there's 184,000 that they share.
Yeah. Yeah, that's an adjustment, so there's always a couple of adjustments that, well, the first one is we use any remaining fund balance after TIF 1 has collected the increment and paid the expenses, and we pay back the general fund for the amount that was loaned years ago. And then there's also the amount then that goes back to TIF 2 because of the increment sharing that the Village authorized a few years ago to pay that down. And this year, it was, there was a hit to TIF 2 because there was a debt payment as well, and there's another one this year, and then that's debt, that's gone. And the way that the Village has projected this out, and I think Cam will mention this a little bit, it does still look like it's going to be able to recapture that deficit for TIF 2 and end up with a surplus, you know, not significant, but a surplus at the end of TIF 1's life, which is not too far off. So it's looking good.
So is TIF 1 paying back all that funds from the general fund already, so maybe now we're just pouring money to TIF 2?
I can't remember if it's paid at all back.
I don't think all of it, but...
I think it's close.
It's very close on TIF 1, but we have, we can't, yeah, we've got a, we, it's not paid, you mean back to the general fund or the TIF 1 total expense?
Paid back to the general fund, that's...
I mean, it's one and the same, I guess. No, no. That'll be paid off, I think it's in late 2022.
That sounds right, yeah, yeah. And Cam's, some of Cam's numbers, I'll hit on that too. So the general fund is bringing that money back in now. You know, with that, I'll transfer it, unless you have questions on that stuff. All right. I'll go to Cam for a little bit before I talk about utilities.
Can I let John come back here and say something? Just because we were talking about the TIF, TIF 2 and TIF 1 transactions, as expected this year, there was that large TIF repayment to pay off the debt, and that is, we're expected to have another payment similar to that amount, approximately 350,000 for 2021. And what really is going to offset that in 2021 is the lease revenue bonds that TIF 1 was paying to the CDA is now over with, so that will allow additional increment in 2021 to be used to pay off the TIF 2 $345,000 payment. So if you look at your overall general fund increase in fund balance, you'll see you had a $321,000 increase from prior year and that was primarily. Oh, sorry, sorry, page 40. All right. And so like I was mentioning, you'll, you'll see that there was a $321,000 increase in fund balance in your general fund, which is relatively consistent to where we've seen across other communities here in Wisconsin. And that, that took responsible fund expenditure reductions as part of COVID-19. A big reduction in, in spending that of the general fund was the pool then opened in 2020. So you saw about a $65,000 cost savings. And then you also had some additional funding from routes to recovery grant that this village received in 2020. So you budgeted for a $57,000 reduction in fund balance in the general fund and you'll see that about mid-page on page 40 and ended up with a $321,000 gain, which was better, but better by $378,000. So you have three different fund balance categories here at the village for the general fund. The unassigned, assigned and non-spendable. For the non-spendable portion, that represents your portion such as your TIF advances. And so you'll see that non-spendable portion went up this year by a hundred, about, sorry, about 200,000 from prior year. And that was a big driver of that was the large balloon debt payment in the TIF. You'll see in, for non-spendable, I'm sorry, for un, or assigned fund balance, that went up by approximately 103, 100,000. And that was primarily driven by there was additional funds that the city budgeted for, for 2021 to be used. And so that is taken out of unassigned fund balance and put in to assigned fund balance to account for that additional essentially planned spend down in funds. So a detailed breakdown of your budget to actual schedules can be found in the financials on pages 52 to 53. I won't go over those in details, but if you would like to look at where your general fund results were in more details, that will have a breakdown by, by revenues and expenses in the different categories. The ambulance fund this year had a $13,778 loss, which has now a total deficit of $243,000. That was better than budgeted by $16,000 and as kind of anticipated, as the transit service continues to get larger, which has a better collection rate, we can continue to see that that fund kind of goes to the right direction. Any questions on breakdown of fund balance for the general fund? All right. Then we can go on to page 41. Another portion of assigned fund balance, the city or the village adopted a fund balance policy back in 2019 where you can essentially decide, management decides between 30 and 40% can be assigned for future capital and our infrastructure need, essentially reducing the amount that you need to borrow. And so for, as of 12, 31, 2020, you'll see that balance is $208,582. And that can be found on page 41 of your financial statements. Also on page 41 of your financial statements, you'll see a breakdown of what each individual portion of the fund balance is in each category. For, for 2020, discussions with Nick, we decided since we were already at the top end of our fund balance at 40% would be a good target. So we did cap it at the 40%.
I was going to interrupt too a little. Actually, our policy, I think the way our policy reads is our goal is between 30 and 40% and everything over 40% we put into, we move out. So I think we're, our goal is to maintain 40%. So once, once we're above 30%, that's our goal. But after, when we reach 40%, then everything above that would go.
Yep. So it's, it stays within the general fund and assigned is one of the most more flexible fund balance classifications. So it's not like it went anywhere, but it's essentially saying, okay, this is the bucket now as you budgeted for the general fund. That's kind of that safety net that, okay, now we have this kind of money put aside for, you know, future costs. But it's essentially kind of when you're looking at it at a budgeting perspective that you're like, okay, well, we shouldn't plan to spend down this fund balance because we really want this reserved for, for capital projects and.
Yeah, but ideally what, I mean, our, our thought process, and I think it even says in the policy, I don't have it sitting in front of me, but I think the idea was to use it to reduce future debt, debt for capital.
Nick, question or, it says the dots on 40. Obviously that's the cap. Was it over or?
It was over.
What was the actual amount that we were over then or percentage wise?
Oh gosh, 46%.
I don't know the percentage.
Or dollar amount?
Yeah, where was that amount moved? Cameron, is it on 41?
Yeah, on page 41, on the bottom of the financials, you'll have the different classification. I think it's right above unassigned and right below committed in that table.
Okay, there's committed.
Yeah, I've asked, I found this last year. I can't find it again.
You're looking for that percentage that was.
No, the amount that was.
The amount that we were over and above the 40%, it seemed like you said 46 roughly and just wonder what that 6% equated to for us, the amount or whatever the amount is or.
So you should see that the 208 amount.
I'm trying to find that. That's.
208.
Is it in there?
Well, there it is. It says capital improvement. Is that where it was moved to then? Got it. That's where that moves to. That's the, got it.
And, and I think the policy was written very flexible because if we put any restrictions on it and say, that's what it has to be used for, well, then if something else came up in the general fund that needed that funding, at least now it's flexible. It can be moved back and forth. You know, when we were working with Nick on that. On page 42 now, you'll see that on the debt, debt, that 41% at the top of the, the page essentially represents your, of the total debt, geo debt you can borrow. That's what your percentage is. And if you had prior year in front of you, you'd see that percentage was 55%. So you saw quite a bit of a decrease. And as expected, that TIF, that large TIF payment did decrease that percentage quite a bit. And we would expect that if no additional debt would be issued this year, would continue to go in that downward fashion. And you will see over time, it's been relatively consistent over, over time. So.
Just a question on that. What is the village or what is, what is asked of auditors as far as the maximum amount that you'd like to see it at? As far as your debt percentage wise?
And if Nick share, eventually shares the PDF, there is a really good comparative metrics. At the bottom, there's a link that you can follow. And it does have a lot of good comparative between communities, especially in Wisconsin. So you can compare similar size, geographic location and such. And if you wanted to take some note, I actually tried clicking the link and you'll have to click research, data tool and then municipal data if you want to get to the, where, where we're referring to on here. It kind of takes you to the homepage. Any other questions on debt? Debt 2.0 on the next page. As you can see that there, there's two different graphics that are shown. There's the, the reference, which is the median for, for communities, 0 to 10,000 in population. And you guys are slightly above that. As John had mentioned, a lot of that has to do with the, the outstanding TIF debt as well as the lease revenue bonds that were just paid off this past year as well. So while that is a little higher than the overall medium, it's been one, consistent and it is two, because that there's some debt, debt tied up with the capital.
Some of that's a policy decision too, is it not? Especially when you think of, and you know, the smaller towns and the smaller villages, I think a lot of them are in the, in the thought process of pay for it with cash and, and they certainly, that's fine, but you know, we've borrowed a lot here. I mean, we have a different, I think, policy of how we approach that and think about that. So not that, I guess there's probably a lot of communities that are very similar to us that are spending the same amount of money every year. It's just that they're doing it in a different way. You know, we just had, we carry more debt because we do borrow for our capital every year.
I'm going to turn it back to John here. Ryan O'Donnell is the manager, actually I think he's the senior manager on the village's utility portion of the audit. So I'm going to, he gave me some notes, so I'm going to do my best. I think I know what's going on. So. Page 44 is water utility and this lays out four different financial metrics, way to look at it. You can see that top graph, the operating results, very flat lines. Green are revenues, pretty much flat line like we see in a lot of water utility funds these days. Black is the operating expenses. You have an authorized rate of return from the PSC of six and a half percent. This year you can see it was a little bit below that, 5.82%. That's because the water fund incurred expenses that it wasn't, it did not capitalize of about $30,000 or some painting of a water reservoir. And some items you can capitalize like that, some you cannot gap and the PSC were not okay capitalizing a cost like that. So that was a direct hit to your operating results. Otherwise, if you hadn't incurred that, you would have been at 6.79, say 6.8%. So above your authorized rate. And think of the authorized rate as really a target rate. Okay.
That's capitalized.
The unrestricted reserves right underneath there. This is a measurement of your unrestricted cash. So the water fund and the sewer fund have both restricted cash by the bonds that require it. But then it has unrestricted and that's kind of liquid cash, if you want to think of it like that. And so one way to look at that is how long could that cash last or how many months do you have on hand? And that's that data going across there. You're at 8.58. It's down a little bit, but again, because of that expense we just talked about. But here you generally want to be around three to six months, a billing cycle, which is three months, you know, up to, up to two months or two billing cycles. So you're above that. So very healthy. Debt coverage, this is more of a compliance issue. The revenue bonds that are outstanding have a one and a quarter requirement. You're at 2.75 for earnings. And the bottom here is a, a measurement of, it's a calculation, I should say, of, of your capital. Cause these, all three of these funds obviously are very capital intensive. How much have you paid for out of debt versus earnings? And out of earnings, which is very strong. You want generally 50% or better. So it's directly related to the outstanding debt you have on this fund. So that's, those are all good. Similar story on sewer on the next page 45. You can see flat line revenues, expenses bounce around a little bit more, but still give you positive net income or operating results. Your unrestricted reserves, you're 11 and a half months there. Again, you're shooting for three to six, so you're about double that. Debt coverage, no concerns there. And this bottom graph, even though it doesn't look right, something got messed up in the, in the graph. But you, you have 2%, only 2% of your capital is out of, out of debt. The other 98% is out of earnings.
And I just want to make a note on the, this one is a little more volatile with the wastewater treatment. If you recall, some years we get the big credits, some years we have wet years and that, that can go from $100,000 to $150,000 to $480,000. And if you recall last year, it was pretty high and that's why you see these, these bumps in the expense. And then the other thing I wanted to mention here was we have very, very, very low debt right now in the wastewater utility, but stay tuned. We know that that's coming with this wastewater treatment plant and the phosphorus. So you know, that, that will go up.
Good news for that is it's positioned well to handle that. So. And the last page 46 is focusing on your stormwater. You can see it was pretty, pretty regular up until it hit 2019, especially 2020 where the expenses exceeded. This is kind of the story of a lot of stormwater utility funds that we see. You set the rates, the same amount comes in every year and then you finally have to incur some capital. You have two options. You can issue debt, of which this fund has no debt, or you can use your cash and you use, the village use your cash. So your unrestricted reserves, you can see went from 21 months down to 0.36. But you still had a little cash. So that's, that's all right. And my guess is it's going to inch its way back up. But obviously it's, it's not positioned to go into a project like that or, or spend like that. It was a heavy and cancel, heavy capital year for it. So if, if that was the case again over the next couple of years, you'd probably have to incur some debt for it.
We elected to pay for it. We had a lot of projects last year, a lot of projects, we had a pond cleaning project. We had Beschad Avenue and, and being a smaller utility from an, from an annual perspective, these projects still cost a lot of money for it, like a Beschad Avenue. It spends that money down a lot quicker than some of the other utilities. We are going to be looking probably at slight increase for next year, 2022 for the stormwater utility. Right now we're, we've been charging $56 a year for an average homeowner for the last, since 2007. We have never increased that rate. So even a little bit of a cost increase, even if you, $4 a year, I mean, makes a, a big difference and it's a very small amount to the tax or the utility payers. So, and I did talk, actually reached out to Cameron about this when we got earlier on before the construction and, you know, we talked about in worst case scenario, we just look at the other, we kind of look at all three utilities as, as a pot of money. If we needed the money in the stormwater utility, the wet water, the wastewater utility have a lot of cash on hand that we can, we can actually do some inter, inter borrowing between the goals. So. That's our, probably our plan if we need to do that.
Probably what you got to be a little bit cautious of is the water utility because it's so regulated by the PSC.
Maybe I said that wrong. The wastewater utility.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah. I think you said it right. So yeah, stormwater fund, even though it's used at, it's still, no, no debt. You can see all green at the bottom there. All right. That's all we had. Unless there are any more questions for us. We really appreciate you having us as your auditors. I say that every year, but I mean it. It's great to be back here.
And we just, your, your staff and your crew, they always do a great job here and are very thorough and get us the information we need to have ready for you guys ahead of time. So.
Last.
Yep. Sounds right. 22, 23, I think.
TIP 2, does that kind of close to the same time or is that going to? We don't have much revenue coming in.
The debt will be paid off. The debt will be paid off the same time TIF 1 closes. So as far as the closure of that TIF, I don't honestly know the regulation on that. Once it's paid off, I, I don't know.
You can close it early. But if you think there's a chance something is going to happen out there, you can keep it open.
There's no reason we would. I don't know that we have any revenue. There's a very little. I mean, it's only increment that's since, since the TIF was created, anything new is the only thing that we get. And I don't, I don't know that there's any increment out there.
At all. There is. No.
There's none, but, but it would probably be in our best interest to keep the TIF open. I didn't know that we could close it early. That way if something did come up, you know, we could use it.
Yeah. And the, the village's municipal advisors, elders, right?
Yeah.
They're, they're great on that kind of stuff to help you plan and look forward. Yeah.
Do they just question on that where TIF 1 is paying TIF 2's premium cost? At what point, if any, does TIF 2 pay it back or is it pretty much done because it's all the same hot or?
It would be done. I mean, unless TIF 2 all of a sudden there was a big development, it was able to.
But isn't it going in the same spot though? It's going back into the general fund because it's really paying it back or not? Cause isn't the money, once you get it, isn't it just going into our general fund or how does that work? I'm just curious.
So yeah, it is, it's very confusing. So TIF 1 in the early days, just basically borrowed from the general fund. So it's paid that back. But then TIF 1 also shares increment with 2 because TIF 2 hasn't had any revenues coming in.
TIF 2, yes, owes the general fund.
Right. Right. So TIF 2 borrowed from general fund. Right. So TIF 1 pays back general fund, general fund pays. TIF 1 pays back general fund. TIF 1 shares increment with TIF 2. So then TIF 2 can pay back general fund. That's how it goes. And you know, schematic.
TIF 1 is paying the whole pot.
Yep. Absolutely.
But TIF 1 can only recapture what it's loaned out plus some interest.
Which is fine. I mean, the, the other alternative is be that we would have closed TIF 1 earlier and then that money would be going to the jurisdictions, which is also a good thing. So. But we were able to, they all, you know, that joint review board agreed to allow TIF 1 to be a. But we were able to, they all, you know, that joint review board agreed to allow TIF one to be a donor to the TIF two.
So by keeping it open allows that revenue to pay off other things. And once it closes, then all the other entities start drawing part of that.
Right, so right now, we're sitting at like twenty-five million dollars of, of tax value out there. That once that closes, all the other jurisdictions will get their fair share of that twenty-five million.
How's that affect us then, what?
Value, so like two hundred and, I think it's like two hundred and eighty, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars is what? That we will then have new general fund revenue.
Okay.
When that closes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, appreciate you, John and Cameron coming on.
Thanks for having us.
Great job, and glad to hear, I mean, we always know that the village worked well at the end, you know, so.
And Chris wasn't able to make it tonight, but Chris does the lion's share of the work, so kudos to Chris.
Absolutely. All right, thank you, have a good night.
Thanks, guys.
All right, moving down to communication, we're not, are we?
We can, yes, we would want a motion to accept the financial report.
Okay, can I get a motion, or what is the board's pleasure on the possible action on the twenty twenty financial audit?
I'll make a motion that we accept the audit, twenty twenty financial audit as presented.
I got a second. Got a motion by Daphne, second by Horning, to approve the twenty twenty financial audit as presented. Any other questions or comments on this item? See none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. All right, now we'll move down to communications, any communications? Any unfinished business? Any new business? I get a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Got a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion by Price, second by Horning to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Thanks, everyone, for coming.